Call to order, City of Lawrence Common Council. First meeting of the year of 2022, 2024, January 8th, and the time is 6:35. All right, I'll pledge allegiance in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, do you mind doing the prayer?
Lord, we thank you for your presence, your mercy, and your grace. We ask that you lead us and guide us and protect our community, protect our city, protect those who live in it and who serve in it. We ask all these blessings in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. We do have a determination of a quorum. Do we have a quorum? The first item on the, uh, on the agenda is the election of our 2024 council president and vice president for the Lawrence Common Council. All right, I will, uh, open to take a motion.
I make a motion to nominate Ms. Betty Robinson.
Betty Robinson.
Where's the volume?
So I'll make a motion to nominate Ms. Betty Robinson.
I second. All right, and we have, so I have a motion that's been moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll, um, have a vote by show of hands, by all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We have, uh, congratulations, Mrs. Betty Robinson as our new vice, our new council president. The next item on the agenda, uh, for that is vice president. Uh, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to nominate Sharon Freeman.
All right, the second.
I'll second.
Second motion, Council Chavis, second, uh, Councilor Carlos Jennings.
Jennings. Well, I guess I fucking just figured it all.
Sorry about that. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do by roll call vote by show of hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Can you bring it, come on?
It is all yours. Your meeting.
There's not much left to do, so you'll be fine.
You're all right. Thank you, councilors, for this honor to sit here and be the president. And thank you, Lawrence, City of Lawrence, for nominating me as counselor at large. I will do my best. This is a new position for me, sitting here as president. I am nervous. Counselors, do you have anything else you want to share? Okay. Um, comments of the council members and special recognitions or resolutions?
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to ask that Frost Brown Todd, being represented by Carrie Dormin, come forward. We will be, um, having a conversation and getting a brief presentation from Frost Brown Todd as we will be seeking to, um, hire a new council attorney. And we have already spoken with one firm, Ice Miller. And so, Mr. Dormin, if you would come forward. And if you can please just state your name and address for the record and...
Absolutely. Uh, my name is Carrie Dormin. I'm a partner at Frost Brown Todd. I'll give you two addresses. My business address is, um, 201, uh, I'm sorry, we moved, 111 Ohio Street. Uh, we're on, we're in the Salesforce building. Um, and my home address is 1745 North Pennsylvania Street, uh, in Indianapolis. So I'm delighted to be here tonight. I appreciate it. I'm sorry that I've given you all more paper than you probably cared to have. We've done our best at killing trees, I'm sure, at my firm today, but I just want you to have a little bit of information about our various practices and, um, our qualifications as possible counsel for the common council. So, um, we're delighted to be here tonight. Um, I brought three of my colleagues, oh, there they are, uh, three of my colleagues, and, um, they are all representing sort of the municipal law area or public finance. So we have a great deal of overlap at our firm at Frost Brown Todd between our, um, municipal law and our public finance teams. So, um, all of them have governmental clients, uh, so I think that, you know, that will hopefully be a little bit helpful to hear from some of them. In your materials, I did include a slideshow, but my lack of technologic sophistication prevented me from actually bringing a thumb drive with the slideshow on it. So you actually have a, a bit of a paper, a short paper slideshow, um, if that's something that you want to refer to. Um, I don't know how familiar anybody is with Frost Brown Todd. We are a, um, an Indianapolis, um, we have an Indianapolis office here. We're a total of 575-plus lawyers, about between 75 and 80 in the Indianapolis office. Uh, we are decentralized, so there is not one office that controls the other, uh, other offices. Um, we have 16 offices, most of them concentrated right here in the Midwest. Um, but every one that I have with me tonight practices in the Indiana or the Indianapolis office and would have municipal clients in the, um, state of Indiana. So many of whom you would all know. Um, so we're, we're delighted to be here. I did include a listing of kind of our core practices and service areas. My practice is environmental, so it feels a little bit strange for me to be here tonight talking a little bit about these things, but I will tell you, um, that, you know, I wish I, I wish I could promise that as a board or commission, you all will never have to deal with EPA or the Department of Environmental Management or DNR, but we all know that that's not reality. Uh, you very likely will at some point. So I've listed as, as much as possible and practical sort of our core practice areas and service areas to give you a sense of what you could expect in terms of, uh, your representation from Frost Brown Todd. We, I, I like to think that we're sort of the best of both worlds. You get kind of a, a specialized knowledge along with sort of, uh, really solid day-to-day operational support from our office. So, uh, as you all know, your questions are not going to just come during these sessions. You're going to have a great deal of, of question and issue and concern sort of leading up to your meetings. And, um, so I, uh, want to assure you that our team is, uh, you know, will be there to help with all of, uh, both your day-to-day operations, your meetings, those types of things. And I'll let Scott and Denise and Michael talk a little bit about this as well. Um, I, I think we have, um, you know, one of the, the best things I think we do at our firm is, um, we have a wonderful culture. Uh, we are Mansfield certified, which I hope that, you know, I hope that folks understand that and how important that is to our firm. Um, I think of it as sort of the Rooney Rule for, uh, business law firms. Um, and it's something that we take very, very seriously at our firm. Um, and, you know, I think that we're a, um, we're a really inclusive and, um, wonderful place to practice in that sense. Um, I did include a little bit of information in here on our commitment to, uh, our communities, our service to our profession. Um, we do a great many pro bono hours. We are representing about 500 or more nonprofit boards, uh, as a firm. Um, and I think that's probably all that I will say. If anybody has questions, I mean, we can, we can certainly wait until we're finished. Um, I'd be happy to do that if that makes sense. Uh, or if you have, you know, questions that I might be able to answer before I turn it over to Scott Croft, who will talk about municipal law, and then Michael Allen and Denise Lund, who can talk a little bit more about their municipal experience, uh, and kind of the public finance side.
So I think if I can, if, um...
Madam President?
Yes.
Um, if we could just have the council, I think we sort of, you know, have some very pointed questions that we would like to ask, and, and I think that can sort of guide our conversation. And if we need any more, certainly, um, if anybody wants to come forward to answer the question that is best suited, that, I think that would be fine. I think one of the questions I have is, um, being in excluded or second-class city, um, there are things that are unique, um, to our city from a statutory perspective, right? And so I wanted to know if Frost Brown Todd has represented any second-class or excluded cities.
Scott, I think, I think most of these folks can answer that question better than I can. Do you want to come on up and... Go ahead.
Sure. Good evening, Council Scott Croft. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Um, I work at Frost Brown Todd for the record, offices, um, at 111 Monument Circle Suite 4500. We appreciate the opportunity and would very much look forward to the chance to work with you all. Um, in terms of representation of second-class cities specifically, personally, um, I, I don't serve as general counsel to second-class cities, but a number of our clients who come to us with issues are second-class cities. So, um, we often, um, serve clients in various capacities. For example, public finance is an easy one, right? So those cities who are second-class cities come to us for that specific service. Um, but rest assured, we're very familiar as well, um, with the generalities of the municipal codes that relates to all classes of all cities, towns, counties, municipalities across the state. Um, we have experts in our firm and in all those areas and certainly have that expertise for you.
Thank you.
I had a question, please. That, uh, Madam...
Yes.
You know, you didn't, you did talk about the second-class city portion, but you didn't speak about excluded cities, and that's a very important part for us.
This is, uh, I'm going to invite Denise Lund up.
Hi there. I am Denise Lund. I am the Chair of the Public Finance Department. We have worked with excluded cities in bond transactions in particular, um, and I'm, I, I don't know about other attorneys, every attorney that we've got, um, and whether they've represented the excluded cities in various things. I would say we probably have, uh, and we are very used to looking at, you know, the City of Indianapolis has a lot of its own statutes. Towns have their own statutes, right? We're, we're very used to all of those scenarios. I have done bond deals with them, um, and I, I just don't specifically know, you know, of...
I'm not, I...
Without looking, if we've specifically done other work with excluded cities.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Beach Grove Speedway.
Yeah, right.
Southport.
Yeah, I know them. I just don't know specifically if we've done something more than, uh, bond work.
And I think, I think bond work is, is a lot of what we would look for, your help. So that's important to note, that if you have done bond work for those cities, that, that's great to know.
We have.
Thank you.
But there's times, I want to elaborate on that, though. We had to fight for our art money.
Yeah.
Right? Because it, because of Unigov and went to Indianapolis first and all that. And so we had to fight for that. And so, you know, we just got out of the stormwater, could, you know, and, and started our own store. So it's stuff like that, that I feel like as we manage and govern this city, um, there's going to be times that, uh, some of the new councilors, uh, don't realize there's things that we don't have control over that you think we do, but, but it's, it's the county executor who is. And so I want to make sure that when we're receiving that counsel, that we have someone that totally understands, because it really does play a major role in the way we govern our city here in Lawrence. We're really, you know, we're, we're in a really particular situation for the whole state, because then we're the largest of the excluded cities as well. And, um, so that's, that's my concern on that question.
No, I, I agree, uh, with your concern on that. I, um, in my past life, have spent a fair amount of time in my, on the private side, uh, on the, I lived in Speedway for 20 years. We just moved in the last two years downtown. So, um, but during that time, I was on the Stormwater Management Board. So, um, I understand those concerns. And stormwater, it, you know, that, that's a, a big part of my, uh, a big part of my world with municipal entities, so...
That is absolutely great for us, because we were, we, you know, voted out of the stormwater, but we haven't done anything really with it. And so this, this term, I know I'm looking forward to, uh, seeing us execute, uh, when I'm seeing some of our city guys here, and I'm sure they're looking for that. And so, um, yes, that's, that's really big. Thank you.
Michael, I'm sorry.
I'm Michael Allen, partner at Frost Brown Todd. I'm at the same address as everyone else that's working. I just wanted to chime in on...
And I don't know, apparently, so...
Madam President, rest of the board, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. Um, to, to address your, your concerns, understanding that completely, actually, in my decade and a half of practicing at the prior firm I worked at, I am, worked with the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority, the City of Lawrence and such. So I know that there's more than just being excluded city. There is other things that are really specific to, to the City of Lawrence and how all those ent- intertwining's work. And so, um, and, and I, and I have seen this city, uh, to grow this area. I come here almost every Saturday and Sunday, go to Porter Books and Bread. Love that place. It's right there.
Right.
It's no plug, they're not sponsoring, but it's awesome.
Right.
Um, but yes, I understa-, you have a lo-, you have a lot of very specific things that are concerning, that, that you have to deal with specifically, and those are things that know, address, and have, um, ex-, you know, experience in addressing and working through and navigating those things. So, um, absolutely, with, that is our number one thing as, that we, I, I think, as a team that we rely on, is one, is that we build our team to look and represent our clients and how that is. It's intentional, and that's for the point, is for everyone. And secondly, we, uh, we approach each client, our number one thing is just educate. More you're educated, the more that we can help you.
Right.
And so that is what we really focus on. And so the, the questions that you're asking are very sophisticated, high level. Appreciate you've been on the, so we're here to help and educate the rest of the board and work through and navigate those issues. But yes, those are areas in which we have expertise in.
Thank you. That's very important.
Thank you.
Any other, other questions?
Any other questions?
We're happy also to provide any additional information that you all need. I mean, certainly if you have a burning question, uh, later, we're happy to get you the follow-up information. So congratulations.
One other, one other particular question, sorry. Any experience with energy savings? I believe that we're going to be entering into going back into the energy savings. That is all, you know, on us as a council. Good, okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. No, we appreciate your, your time.
Thank you. Okay, um, approval of minutes of regular meeting of December the 20th, 2023?
I'll make a motion.
Any other...
Wait a minute. Other councillor comments?
Any other councillor comments for, okay. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting of, of December the 20th, 2023?
Madam President, I, I move that we approve.
Second.
I'll second.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Show of hands. We call show of hands.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote. All in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Any opposed?
Any opposes? Nope.
Yeah. Motion carries.
Motion carry. Okay, thank you all. Signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment?
So moved.
So moved.
Give me a second.
I'll, I'll second it.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Call for a vote. Show of hands.
Favor.
In favor. Okay, that's eight.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'll have to abstain. I did not get the vouchers or, or the copy of the bills, uh, so I wasn't able to review them. So I'll have to abstain on the bills.
Okay.
We have, what, eight, eight, nine, eight, eight to one, eight to one, one abstention?
Yeah, eight to zero. She wrote it. Motion carry. Reports of committees, none. Certification pursuant to IC 36 dash one dash 20 zero and IC 36 dash one dash 21.
We did that. We already did it.
It's been done? Then move on. It's already done? Okay, it's already done. Unfinished business, none. New business, none. Comments of the administration?
Good evening, councilors, uh, and congratulations, President Robinson and, uh, Vice President Freeman. Uh, I just, my name is Leandro Lover, for the record. I am a resident of Lawrence. I live at, uh, 5841 Chansford, and, uh, I will be speaking on behalf of the Whitfield Administration. Uh, so congrats again to the new members here on the council, uh, and I look forward to working with the, all of you. If you have any questions for the administration, I'd be happy to be the liaison, uh, between, uh, your office and, uh, Mayor Whitfield. Uh, so I just want to give, um, the council a few updates. Um, it's been barely a week after the historic make, uh, historic making, uh, swearing in of Mayor Deborah Whitfield. Since then, she has made some permanent appointments to nearly every cabinet position in her administration. Uh, this roster reflects a blend of fresh perspective and a handful of new recruits, uh, to this Lawrence City Government, along with some institutional knowledge and individuals who decide to stay and retain their institutional knowledge here in the administration. One of the first appointments, um, Mayor Whitfield has made is a chief of staff. Zachary Brown has been, uh, appointed as chief of staff for the City of Lawrence as, uh, the mayor's chief, um, lieutenant in terms of, uh, policymaking. And I have been designated as the deputy chief of staff, um, for the City of Lawrence. Today is the first day of our new city attorney, Ms. Amber Finley. She is here today, if you can, if they're in the booth. Uh, Ms. Finley is a recruit from the Marion County Agency, um, excuse me, from the Marion County Health and Hospital Corporation, along with her previous experience with Eli Lilly and the Indiana Attorney General's Office. Another appointment the mayor has made is the Keith Johnson as Director of Economic Development. Keith Johnson previously worked, uh, here in the City of Lawrence, and he has, uh, years and of experience managing government relations with various corporations, along with extensive networks of relationship, along with state legislator. Uh, Johnson brings several years of experience in municipal government, uh, thanks to his service in administration, in previous administrations. Uh, you may have saw last week, uh, during the swearing-in ceremony, uh, one of the first acts of Mayor Whitfield is to appoint a new fire chief. We have a new fire chief. And first, before I introduce Bob, I want to thank, uh, fire, former fire chief, Dino Patalis, for his decades of service to the City of Lawrence. And, uh, he has strongly recommended and encouraged, um, that the next generation of fire chief, uh, will have that support amongst, uh, his, his rank and file and all, along with the administration. Uh, so please welcome, uh, Bob Wallace. Bob, come on in. Uh, Bob also too has years of experience, uh, serving here at the City of Lawrence, and is going to make a great fire chief. Uh, Mayor Whitfield reaffirmed her support and commitment to, uh, the Lawrence Police Department by reappointing, uh, Curtis Bixby, Chief Bixby. And also too, uh, Jim Henigan, as our street director, has retained his experience of 38 years of knowledge for the City of Lawrence, and so we're excited to have him here. Jim, there we go. Also too, staying with us is Eric Martin, Director of Parks and Recreation. We're thankful for his years of service as well. Also too, there has been some change in personnel. Mr. Salisbury is no longer the utility supervisor. Uh, the interim, uh, director of, uh, utility superintendent, excuse me, is Mr. Paul Warner. And I will let, uh, the council know that the mayor intends to, uh, place a permanent, uh, direct supervisor of utilities in the coming weeks. Uh, we'll let you guys know once, uh, someone's installed, but we do have to go through, um, the utilities board for that final approval. Uh, I do want to let you guys know that we have an interim city controller, Mr. Humphrey And right now, we do not have a Director of Parks and Recreation. Uh, Suri, last, they was last Friday.
Engineer.
Uh, city engineer, excuse me. Uh, in the meantime, sorry, sorry. City engineer, um, as our DPW director, uh, and right now, uh, Mr. Renee Raffaldas has been really assisting the administration about making sure we're on track with a lot of our projects. And so that is also too, an opening that, uh, the administration will be place, uh, feeling very soon. If you guys have any thoughts or recommendations, feel free to reach out to me, um, in the meantime. So I just want to give a few more action items from the administration that's happened in the last week. Uh, a few things that have actually happened today. Uh, today, the mayor sworn in two new police officers, along with two police reserves at the Lawrence Police Station earlier today. Uh, Junior Maury, uh, Ben Turner, Matt Miller, and Jessica Babbs, uh, were sworn in today by the mayor. Uh, also too, I would note from the chief of police, note that we are in a hiring process right now, and, uh, Chief Bixby is pleased with the prospect of candidates who are currently eligible and is on track. We hope to have a new class or a new, uh, hiring sometime in April. I'll give you guys some up, more updates about that. Also too, from the fire department, uh, the mayor also today sworn in and promoted, uh, Chief Tony Bowde, I might be pronouncing that wrong, I apologize, as the new deputy chief of administration, replacing, uh, Chief Wallace, that was his previous role, and Lieutenant John Moore as the new division chief of EMS. Uh, the fire chief also wanted me to note to the council that the ambulance at Station 40 are moving to another station for the next 10 days due, due to new flooring being installed, and, um, they should be back at their regular station, Station 40 by, uh, January 18th. Uh, in terms of, from DPW and streets, um, Director, uh, Jim Henigan feels confident that DPW is prepared for the incoming mixed weather conditions this week. Uh, the city communications will send out notices to the public about when DPW will be deploying its trucks out into the communities. I just want to let you guys know also too, there's different stages for that and conditions for that. Definitely the, the, the level of snow we may have, or the, the increments that we may have in the coming weeks. Uh, also, they will pre-treat and with a salt brine solution, uh, potentially have some salt on, on the roads as well. And then traditional plowing, uh, with the help of parks and utilities will, will help with that as well, to different neighborhoods and, and government centers and whatnot. Um, comms want me to let you guys know that, uh, the application for the Fort Ben Market went live today on her website, is from, uh, today, I think, till March 15th, if I remember correctly. So if you know any potential vendors who want to be at the, the Fort Ben Market, now is the time. There are metrics that they have to follow, particularly if they're food, uh, make sure they get the proper, uh, permits and certification from the health department. Uh, so I just want to let you guys know about that, and once, um, once that timeline is closed, I will let you guys know. Uh, for the Parks Department, uh, there will be some playground, playground equipment installations in the next few months here. Lawrence Community Park will have, uh, some installations either this month or in February, and then there will be a fence installation at Oakland and Play Park in February. Um, from utilities, the Lawrence Utilities will send out notices regarding the updated payment portal program, uh, portal we're having. Uh, for more information, that will follow soon, um, uh, in terms of the timeline, but if you want the most recent up-to-date... But if you want the most recent up-to-date information, I would suggest checking out the Lawrence Lift Newsletter that came out. We expect one to come out here shortly. But I think the November newsletter is still publicly available. In terms of upcoming events, for the month of January, we have no city-sponsored event. It's the beginning of the new year, new administration. But look out for February for the annual Black History Month Celebration. We hope to put out some communications with that soon. Just some housekeeping notes. I know I've been communicating with council members earlier this week. The clerk office will have your ID badges. We made sure that you guys get those. So, if you have any questions about that, please let me know. Again, contact with Tony. Another housekeeping note, the administration, department heads and staff will exclusively be communicating with counselors through your city email account. Okay? And so, if you have any problems with your city email account or anything like that, please contact Kevin, who's back here, Sam Born, with IT. He'll make sure you get access to your email account. There's, our city attorney was very adamant about making sure that we relay that information to you guys publicly. And final thing, after the conclusion of this meeting, the mayor, Whitfield, would like to invite you all to our office, that and department head, as a public invitation. You're more than welcome to come on up after the meeting. And with that, take any questions.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
How does one apply for the police positions? Or get the process, you know, started?
I do know there, there is an online website. Lawrence Police does follow the Indiana Merritt Commission Board through those, through that process. But I think the police chief could probably answer a question a lot better than I can.
I got some recruits for you.
Right now, we're currently in the process right now, so the opening for a new one won't happen until the commission actually finishes certifying this list here before we open it up again.
Oh, so the list is closed now?
Right, this one is closed for right now.
Okay.
We're in the middle of a process and background phase.
Okay.
Then it's on Join LPD. Then you can get all the links there when we open it up. And we do revolving actual, you know, processes if we deplete that list.
So, you guys will let us know when the list opens? Because I don't think we were informed when the list opened up this past time, I don't think.
We've had five actual application processes this year. So, like every process, we only had 18 in one of our processes. And then half of those people dropped off, and then another half of those people dropped off. And then we only actually ended up with two people out of that process alone. So, then we had to start another process. But this process right here that we're in right now, that's very diverse. We have about 25, 26 people still on the list. And so, we should get to our maximum authorized strength by the end of this year.
Awesome. Thank you. Citizen comments?
None. Okay. Next on the agenda, citizens' comments. Let's go and get the list.
There are none.
Okay.
There are none.
There aren't none? Okay. There are none. So, with that—
We need adjourned.
We need adjourned.
Thank you.